Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for joining us here today. Welcome to the meeting of the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is Tuesday, September 17th. Will you please stand for the pledge? Thank you. In the event of a fire or other emergency, please follow the exit signs that are provided in this room and throughout Town Hall. Upon exiting this room, the main exit is located in the rear of the building. Do not use elevators during an emergency event. This meeting is being recorded and streamed online. Do not want to wait for the, to hear the item of any given petition. You can call the town clerk's office tomorrow after 9:00 a.m. to learn the outcome of the, of the petition. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Chairman Bray?
Present.
Member Schubert?
Present.
Member Phillips?
Present.
Member Parker?
Present.
Member Gergen?
Present.
Thank you. And also here with us tonight is, is Daniel Latauski and Nora Robshaw. Onto approval of the minutes. Could I get a motion for approval of last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Member Phillips, second by Member Schubert. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? I will abstain. Thank you very much. The first item on tonight's agenda is a area variance for 438 Kaladine Avenue. Will the petitioner please come to the podium? It's Indad Hussein. All right, we will table that item for now. See if he comes later this evening. The second item on tonight's agenda is 423 Millersport Highway. Kenneth Cousins, please come to the podium. Please say your name to the microphone and make sure that it, your name and address into the microphone and make sure it's written down on the sheet at the podium.
Okay, Holly Cosse. I'm from Kilkennyburg Homes, representing Mr. Cousins. The address of the property is 40623 Millersport Highway.
All right, do you want to present the petition?
We want approval to build a 600 or 768 square foot home. It's, the original home had burnt, and so we're basically just replacing it. And we're asking for the smaller square footage because that's what it was, and that's what the insurance company is willing to reimburse Mr. Cousins for.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee have a question for the applicant?
You'll be using the footprint of the original building that burned.
Yes, yes.
So it's not any, one of the reasons you need the variances is to have that existing home, which was rezoning. I've lost my train. Sorry. But it's basically replacing in kind.
Yes, and I think your new square footage is based on you, you're requiring for new builds to be 1,000 square feet. So we're just asking, it is a new build, but we're asking that we can still maintain the 768 versus the additional 300 square feet, which, you know, could add 60,000 to 70,000 more to Mr. Cousins over what his insurance is paying on the 768 square foot, so.
All right, thank you. Is anyone here from the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing then. Is, would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
To approve.
Motion by Member Schubert, second by Member Gergens. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passed 5-0.
Thank you very much.
The third item on tonight's agenda is 205 Long Meadow Drive, St. Peter's Episcopal Church. Will the applicant please come to the podium? Please write down the, your name on the sheet provided above, as well as state the name, your name and address into the microphone.
Okay, good evening. My name is Lois Tripp, and I have, thank you. My name is Lois Tripp. I have Deacon Tom Tripp here from St. Peter's and Mike Towby. St. Peter's is at 205 Long Meadow Road in Egbertsville. It is a small, the sign will go next to a small building, which is with the church pictures and the information that I gave to you. We've been in the neighborhood for 70 years. We've submitted a variance for an LED sign on a small portion of the lawn near Long Meadow Road and Kaladine Avenue. The variance is needed because the sign is less than 15 feet away from Long Meadow Road, and it also, it's, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum distance of 500 feet on the other side. And we have intermittently had a sign on that area, and we've had to move it back and forth. It's on wheels. The neighborhood is used to seeing it, but it's become, as our population ages, it's very difficult with the snow and the rain, and that's why we decided to get an AED if we can. Our variance requests. Sorry. We, we outline them, and the character of the neighborhood should not be changed at all. It's not an unusual thing for them to see a sign. The benefits sought cannot be achieved without the variance. Changes will not be substantial in nature. And let me see that little picture that I had here. This thing, yes, thank you. On number four of the variance, I just wanted to mention, it says, "Physical or environmental conditions describe the proposed variance." And I said, "The sign will be an attractive addition to the corner. It won't cause an obstruction for walkers, traffic circulation, safety, or add any noise or odor." And I just wanted to mention that part of what's so nice about these is that they can be controlled also. They don't have to be lit in the evening. We're able to turn them off within the neighborhood if, if our neighbors would like it to be turned off at night. The sign would be within the parameters you require. It's six foot, four inches wide. I'm sorry, we had that up there before and I didn't point it out, but the base would be four foot, nine inches, and the height's six foot, eight, six foot, eight inches, which is, is well within the parameters. There needs to be electricity run to it, and I'll let Mike talk to that a bit.
Real quick, the sign only requires a 110, 110 line, nothing 220, nothing heavy duty. We do have a dedicated circuit on the back of the house. It is not being used right now. The panel we have in the house is more than enough to handle, and this sign only requires 8.56 amps. So it's more than enough for a circuit breaker to, to handle this. We will be hiring a licensed, insured electrician to run the line, which is a short distance from the bill, from the building to this sign.
Mike, can you say your full name and address in the microphone?
I'm sorry, Mike Towby.
Address?
My address, 345 Cape and Boulevard, Amherst, New York. Sorry. Okay.
And if approved today, we hope to improve the communication with our neighbors, our community, and the general public. Thanks for your time, and any questions?
This is an LED sign, correct?
Yes.
Have, have you spoken to any neighbors that would have a direct line of sight within, with, of the sign?
You know, our plan is to do that. We have talked about that at meetings. We wanted to see if, in all, this is something we'd be able to do because we knew we needed a variance, but we are planning to speak to our neighbors about it. We have a good relationship with the neighbors. As I said, we've been there a long time, and, you know, no one has ever complained about the other sign that we had, and they did have the ability to be lit at night. We didn't do it all the time, but.
So our, our board approves these requests quite frequently. However, usually the applicant comes in, and having spoken with the neighbors before, before getting our approval, would you be willing to hold off on a month for our approval in order to talk to the neighbors, make sure that they are okay with it before we approve it?
Sure. We can do that.
May I ask a question? The neighbors have already been notified, as I understand it. Haven't they?
The neighbors are aware, the priest was. I don't think all the neighbors have been notified, no.
The radius.
Oh, you did? Okay. All right, so they've been notified.
So they're either here tonight or they're not.
Okay. So you still like us to talk to some of the.
I mean, we're, we're five independent individuals, so.
Yeah, I have no problem approving it tonight.
I, I know when these have come before us before, one of the questions that we sometimes ask that I'm curious about is, during the day when you have this on, is it going to be one consistent messaging during the day? Do you intend to have it flashing for different messages?
It's, it's not going to be a flashy sign. It's very, there'll be a welcome. Sometimes it might have the temperature or the day that it is. It's going to have events, so it will rotate in messages. That's one of the great things about it, too.
Member Phillips? The, the statute requires that the changeover be once every 10 minutes maximum.
Okay.
And it be instantaneous. They can't roll movies. They can't have scrolling fonts. It has to be instantaneous changeover.
Okay.
Once every 10 minutes maximum.
Thank you. Whatever we need to do, yes.
Question about the light being on at night?
Yes.
Do you plan on keeping it on at night or turning it off or maybe lowering the?
Yes, we can do any of those things. I, you know, we don't have an absolute plan. I wanted to speak to our neighbors and see if it was bothersome to them, and if it is something they feel more comfortable with, I'm very happy to turn it off at night or to dim it. And that can all be done electronically through my phone or through the computer at church, so. Sure.
I'm Deacon Tom Tripp, speaking to. When we put our first movable sign in there, it had lights on it, and we, we got no feedback from the, the neighbors there. And of course, then it ran its time. It just faded, and it's basically useless and everything else, but, so we have, we have, as my wife said, we have very good relationships with our immediate neighbors where they would be affected by such a light, and we've already, you know, dealt with them along those lines. So we feel pretty safe in doing that.
And that sign, the existing sign with lights, it's been in operation for many years, correct?
It, it was, yes, yes. It's not there anymore, and like I said, it was on wheels, and it would get moved here and there, and.
It ran its course.
Yes.
It was one of the old signs with the plastic letters that you put up on, you know, you see.
Sandwich signs.
Just light, no flashes, nothing like that.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience here to speak on this item?
Oh, so just clarification, real, real for us. So should we talk to the neighbors in person again? No?
I think we're about to sort of discuss amongst ourselves before making that, that decision.
I just wanted to know what we needed to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Lon. Well, I don't want to close the hearing if we're, if we leave it open for another month, if their neighbors have comments, so. Well, I'll close the hearing then, and.
Move to approve.
Motion by Member Schubert? Second by Member Gergens? Would you like to make a, a motion on, on nighttime use?
I would propose an amendment that whatever people would find reasonable, I would say nine o'clock, that it has to be turned off.
We have a motion for a condition to, to be turned off by nine o'clock. I'll second that amendment. All in favor on the amendment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Ron, are you?
I'm opposed.
So that looks like that has passed three to two. Now we'll take a vote on the amended motion. Deputy clerk, can I get a roll call on this?
Just so I'm clear, is this with or without the time limitation?
With the time limitations.
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Member Schubert? Member Phillips?
Yes.
Member Parker? Member Gergen?
That passed 5-0. Thank you very much. Now we are on the fourth item of tonight's agenda. It is 2499 Worley Drive. The applicant, Zachary Herner. Do you see, state your name and address into the microphone and make sure it's written down on the sheet on the podium.
Hello, Chairman Bray, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Greg Dion. I reside at 1422 Egbert Road. I am here tonight on behalf of Barron Civil Engineering, who was contracted by the property owner at 2249 Worley Drive in connection to a proposed dog daycare facility at that location. There are three variances we'll be requesting tonight in connection with that project. Next slide. So getting oriented with the location to start, it is in the southeast corner of Amherst, as indicated in red. Next slide. So looking at the zoning of the property, the particular parcel itself is zoned RD. The properties to the south and to the west are also zoned RD. Office business, office building is the zoning to the northwest. You have R3 to the north and to the east, R4 to the northeast, northeast, and then general business and motor service along Transit, Transit Road. Next slide. Looking next at figure six of the conceptual land use map in the towns, from the towns' bicentennial comprehensive plan, you can see that the town does intend for this parcel to be used for office and industrial use. So the zoning and the comprehensive plan are consistent in this case, and the town does desire for non-residential uses to be built on this parcel. Next slide. So just giving you some context for the existing surrounding land uses. You can see the parcel in question over on the right-hand side. It is currently a vacant lot, and then you have two single-family houses on those R3 parcels that are immediately to the east of this parcel. Next slide. Further, getting you guys acquainted with the surrounding area, you do have a large manufacturing facility to the south, and for all the following slides, you can see the parcel in question as indicated with the red rectangle. So you do have a large manufacturing facility to the south. Next slide. You have a real estate developer building to the south, southwest, and what appears to be an outdoor storage yard next to that facility as well. Next slide. You have the United Auto Workers office to the northwest. Next slide. Medical laboratory to the west. Next slide. And also a portable toilet rental supplier to the west as well. Next slide. And just to finalize the surrounding land uses, I do want to go over a proposed surrounding land use that is proposed by the owner of the parcel adjacent to this parcel, on the south and west of this parcel, which I want to stress is not owned by the petitioner. It's owned by another landowner, who has proposed a 70,000 square foot, give or take, self-storage facility on that parcel with a proposed max height of about 28 feet. And it is our belief that a proposed, the proposed dog daycare facility will act, you know, it is a commercial use, and it will act as a sort of barrier, a sort of buffer between that more intensive land use and the adjacent residential parcel to the east of our property. Next slide. You can see here the parcel outlined in red. That's the parcel in question, and you can see the footprint of the 70,000 square foot, square, self-storage facility here, as well as the parking lot for that facility. You'll see on the next slide the plans, but essentially the building and the parking lot that we're proposing would be right here, adjacent to this parking lot here. Next slide. And just to further ground you guys in what's proposed there, you can see that the 28-foot tall max facade of that self-storage facility appears like this. This is generally what it, what they are proposing and what it would probably look like. Next slide. So going back to our parcel in our project, the parcel is currently a vacant lot. We're proposing a dog daycare facility, which I want to stress is a permitted use under the RD zoning. We're proposing a 2,400 square foot pole barn structure, which is more elongated in shape, 30 feet by 80 feet. We have proposed 20 feet as the height of the structure, which would be a single story. Two employees and two customers max are expected on site at any one time, and town code requires five parking spots, and we've provided five, five parking spots in our preliminary plan. The expected operating hours of the business are between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and that falls well within the town's allowable operation for this type of business between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Next slide. We expect approximately 10 dogs on site at any one time. There will be no outdoor area for the dogs, so because this project is within 250 feet of a residential parcel, town code does not allow for any outdoor areas of the dogs, and we've complied with that ordinance. There will be no overnight boarding of the dogs as required by town code, and we believe that this commercial use is a less intensive land use than any other use that could otherwise be built on the site. Next slide. So here is a, the preliminary site plan for the project. You can see Worley Drive over here on the right. If you notice here, the north is oriented towards this direction, so this is the west, this is the east. You can see the outline of the proposed structure here. Again, 30 feet by 80 feet. The parking stalls here, the drive aisle here with the ingress and egress onto Worley Drive. The adjacent RD parcel is this parcel up here, and the adjacent residential parcel is here. We have proposed screening on the edge of the side adjacent to the RD parcel, and we have high-impact screening proposed to be supplied here, adjacent to the R3 parcel, which would include, include trees, evergreen, shrubs, and as well as a, a six-foot fence, which is required by the high-impact screening section of the ordinance. Next slide. Here's a look at the front elevation, again, 20 feet in height, so a single story. Next slide. Here's the rear elevation, again, same height. Next slide. The lighting on the project will be dark sky compliant, so no light shedding onto adjacent parcels. We're going to be providing a drainage well to mitigate stormwater runoff from the structure in the parking area. The noise on the project will, on the property will be maintained to a maximum of 35 decibels as required by town code. As measured by the, at the property line, we're going to be using sound-reducing membranes with inside the building to mitigate sound escaping the structure itself. We're going to be providing high-impact screening, as I mentioned before, along the adjacent residential parcel, so evergreen trees, deciduous trees and shrubs, and there is, is a large amount of existing trees already on that property line, some of which are on our side, some are which are on the neighbor's side, but any that are on our side, we'll attempt to maintain as many mature trees as possible in order to really maintain that separation of land uses there. Next slide. The dog relief will occur on an indoor permeable turf, and the droppings are going to be collected and stored indoors and collected weekly by an outside service. Garbage totes will be used in lieu of a dumpster, and the totes will also be stored indoors. The sightline triangle for exiting vehicles onto Worley Drive will be clear, and the current design doesn't have any windows on it, but we are considering adding in a few picture windows, which cannot open facing the RD parcel, so there will be no windows facing the R3 parcel at all. Next slide. So getting into the specific variances that we're requesting, there are three of them. The first one is the variance one for the lot size. So this is, the RD zoning requires one acre minimum in order to build, but we, this parcel happens to only be .37 acres. But as I mentioned before, the zoning and the comprehensive plan both indicate that this should be used for either an industrial or office-type use. So it's really just a quirk of the zoning. The town wants this to be built in this manner, so we believe this is a pretty appropriate use for that type of land, given all the circumstances. Running through the balancing test, we don't believe an undesirable change will result from granting this. It's a less intensive land use than any industrial use. This will again act as a buffer from that more intensive use, and again, we're providing that high-impact screening. We do not believe that the benefits sought can be achieved in any other method. The RD zoning is set, and it is consistent with figure six, and it just so happens that the parcel is only .37 acres. Is the variance substantial in percentage terms? Yes, but again, otherwise, this lot is unbuildable for any developer without these variances. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood and the district? No, again, we're going to be providing that drainage well to minimize stormwater runoff that might result. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created? No, it's essentially created by the zoning code itself and the dimensions of the parcel itself. Next slide. Variance two is a parking side yard setback. So the parking side yard setback requirements of 10 feet and 25 feet on the west and east, respectively, we're providing 8 feet and 11 feet respectively on both sides, so you can see that indicated here for 8 feet and 11 feet adjacent to the residential parcel. Next slide. Running through the balancing test here, we don't believe an undesirable change will occur. Again, we're providing that high-impact screening. There was no other configuration, the engineer really tried very hard to find another configuration of structure, parking, parking stalls, and drive aisle that would allow for us to not seek this variance, but as you, as you know, the, the drive aisle needs to be a specific width, and due to the elongated nature of this parcel, it's a very, very long parcel. There was no other combination he was able to come up with that would allow us to not have to seek this variance, so that's why we're before you today, seeking this particular variance. Whether the request is substantial, the west setback, no, it's only 2 feet. The east setback, 14 feet. But again, it is necessary due to the lot size and the frontage. We don't believe a negative impact will result, as a result of granting this variance. The parking area would be the same size, even if the lot frontage was larger, and again, we're providing that drainage well to minimize stormwater runoff. And no, the variances would essentially be required for any builder of this lot, so we don't believe it is a self-created difficulty. Next slide. And the final variance we're seeking today is the building side yard setback requirement of 15 feet on the west, whereas we're only providing 8 feet. So before we move on to the next slide, what I really want to emphasize here is that this setback is 30, we provided 31 feet between the parcel, the, the structure itself and the adjacent residential parcel. So, and 30 feet are required by town code. So what we've done is we've pushed this structure as far towards the less sensitive land use of the RD, the RD parcel, in order to make sure that we met that setback requirement and minimized impacts on the adjacent residential parcel. So this was all done very intentionally. Next slide. So running through the balancing test again, we don't believe an undesirable change will result from granting this seven-foot variance. We're going to be providing that screening even on the RD side. The building is located as far west as possible, like I mentioned, in order to really mitigate the effects on the R3 parcel. Next, or sorry, on, on number two, every effort was made to meet the setback requirement for the adjacent residential parcel, so we've really favored that. In percentage terms, yes, the area variance is substantial, but in absolute terms, that's only 7 feet that we're requesting, so no, we don't believe it is substantial in that regard. So we've minimized the impact on adjacent residential and prioritize that over the less sensitive west adjacent land use. We don't believe any physical, negative physical or environmental impact will result from granting this eight, the seven-foot variance, and the variance would, again, pretty much for all three of these variances, any builder of any reasonable use on this lot is essentially going to need to seek the same variances, regardless of, of what its use is, that structure combination with the parking and the drive aisle. You'd really have anyone here before you seeking those same sets of variances for whatever they're building. Next slide. So just to finalize, the three variances we're requesting are the lot size variance, number one, the parking side yard setbacks, number two, and number three, the structure setback adjacent to the RD parcel. Thank you very much for your time. I'll take any questions. Thank you very much for your time. I'll take any questions that anyone may have.
Does any member of the committee have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm sure Daniel Latowski can speak more to this, but essentially the town code, if, I believe it's if the structure is within 250 feet, or is it if the parcels are within 250 feet?
The outdoor run is a permitted accessory use of the land use. However, it has to be 250 feet away from a residential parcel. They cannot maintain a 250-foot setback to have any type of outdoor run because of the proximity of the residential parcel to the west, or east, rather.
What does the outdoor run mean?
It would be an area dedicated for the dogs to go out and relieve themselves and then come back in.
Okay, is any, any other questions from the committee? Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing now now close the hearing, would any member of the committee like to make a comment or a motion? Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Passes five oh.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
We're now on the fifth item of today's agenda. That is 50 Dan Road and 550 Smith Road from the town of Amherst. If you would just make sure you say your name and address into the microphone.
I'm Jessica Bujo. I'm with the Engineering Department, representing the town for this proposed variance. There's a few of them. So this is for proposed improvements to Lou Gehrig parking lot. It's up north of Dan Road and Smith Road. Currently, the parking lots are in rough shape, mostly gravel, poor drainage, no lines marked at all. So parking is an issue, creates a safety issue as well. So we're looking to do a project up there and create an actual parking lot with, you know, pavement, drainage, curbing and markings. But with that, it's completely surrounded by wetlands, so we're kind of restricted to the existing footprint. And that, that creates a couple variance requests. So the first one, I believe, was on the previous slide. Yep, so it's a variance of the minimum setback, which is 25 feet. And we are proposing 22 in the area that circled red right there. And then the next variance on the next slide is the offset from the right-of-way. Currently, the parking lot is in that same spot. So there's a zero-foot setback to the right-of-way. We're going to maintain that. I believe code requires 15 feet for that. And then the next variance is for some stormwater facilities. We actually reconfigured this area. There was two in-and-out driveways. We're going to consolidate that to one, which gives us space to do some stormwater facilities. But space is limited, so the offset there is also not to code. We are proposing five and a half feet, and code requires 10 feet. And then also, there are more than 15 parking spots in some of these clusters. I believe the largest is maybe 18, so that also doesn't meet code. So those are the variances we're seeking. Do you want me to run through the criteria?
The balancing test?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Sure. Okay, so. Character of the neighborhood. The request for relief will not have a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. The proposed reconstruction project will enhance the immediate character of the neighborhood by introducing landscaping enhancements and a paved parking field. Like I said, right now, it's completely gravel. There's no grass at all in those parking lots. Other alternatives, site limitations prevent an alternate design without sacrificing parking quantity, which is the main goal of this project. People are parking in the street, creating unsafe conditions. Substantial, the request for relief is the minimum necessary to achieve the desired parking lot design. Physical or environmental conditions, the request for relief will not have a negative impact on the environment. We're staying out of the wetlands, keeping it in its existing footprint. Not self-created, it is self-created, but site limitation is an existing interior property line between the two town-owned parcels contribute to the hardship. And then the benefit to the applicant, the benefit to the town is less costly, a less costly project with a maximization of parking spaces being provided to the general public for the existing recreation facility.
Thank you. Does any member of the committee have a question?
Yep, Lou Gehrig facility.
Thank you. Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? With that, the hearing is closed. Would any member of the committee like to make a comment or a motion on this item? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes five zero. We are on the sixth item of tonight's agenda. That is 4795 Sheridan Drive. It is my understanding that at the last meeting, the, the public hearing was closed with a 10-day comment period for interested parties to provide comments in writing. There were several comments received in that period of time. Members of the board should have had the opportunity to review any of the comments that we had received. With that, you know, we, the next motion, or the next item that would be considered for a project of this type would be a seeker of negative declaration. Would any member of the committee like to make that motion or make a comment on that? I have a motion by Member Schubert, second by Member Phillips. Deputy Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Member Schubert? Member Phillips?
Yes.
Member Parker? Member Gergen?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed five oh. The, the zoning enforcement officer had circulated a resolution. I'll just read the resolve clause for the record. Now therefore be resolved that the board finds that the proposed project and the requested relief for variances from the zoning ordinance is consistent with the policies of the town's local waterfront revitalization program. So that would be the next resolution on this project that we would have to take. Would any member of the committee like to make a motion on that or provide a comment on that proposed resolution? We have one motion from Member Gergen, second by Member Schubert. Deputy Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Chairman Bray? Member Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yes.
Member Parker? And Member Gergen?
And that has passed five zero. The Town Planning Department has provided our committee a draft finding of fact. They circulated a little bit a while ago, and that we've all had the opportunity to review the finding of fact as it regards to this project. I've reviewed the finding of fact myself, and I find it to be an accurate representation of the process to date. With that, the, we would then have a draft resolution to approve the four variances for this project. The four variances are Section 3-3155A4 for front setback, 3155A4 side setback, Section 311B2 unit quantity, and Section 3156 vehicle use area setback. Would anyone, any member of the committee like to make a motion on this draft resolution to approve the four variances, or would like to make a comment on this resolution? Second. We have one motion from Member Gergen, second by Member Schubert. Deputy Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Member Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yes.
Member Parker? Member Gergen?
Yes.
That has passed five zero. So that item is complete. And that was all the items on tonight's agenda. We did have one, the first item, which no one appeared for. That would be 438 Kaladine Avenue. Is the applicant here? All right, we will adjourn that item for tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn that?
Move to adjourn.
Member, motion by Member Phillips, second by Member Schubert. All in favor?
Yes, there were two conditions in the draft resolution. James, do you want to display the resolution for the benefit of the public? Yeah, so it should be the last slide.
Could we, could we just vote on the motion to adjourn, number one? All in favor? Any opposed? Right, number one is adjourned for tonight. So the two conditions are for the sixth item are now on the screen. Member Schubert, I believe that you were advocating the first one. Do you want to review, summarize that for the audience?
The architecture of the buildings shall be generally consistent with the appearance and material depicted on the color building rendering plans prepared by Sutton Architecture, P LLC, as reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals during the meeting on August 13th, 2004. 2024, I'm sorry. The Planning Department will confirm compliance with this condition during the site plan application review process for the project.
And then the second condition is the applicant shall be required to install a six-foot-tall privacy fence and landscaping along the western edge of the portion of the project site to be developed in a manner consistent with the site plan drawing C100 dated July 29th, 2024, provided by Karmina Wood Design. The Planning Department will confirm compliance with the condition during the site plan application review process for the project. So that item was approved with those two conditions that were in the draft resolution. All right, with that, we've covered all the items on tonight's agenda. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by, motion, Member Phillips, second by Member Gergen, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carried five oh. Thank you.